Hey, everybody. Welcome to Enneagram Prison Project's first Town Hall meeting. My name is Susan Olesick and I am the founder of EPP. And we are so thrilled that you are all here. We have nearly 500 registrants and we are going to be talking today with Dr. Gabor Maté, who is EPP's Advisory Board Member and several of our EPP ambassadors, who are the students that we taught the Enneagram while they were incarcerated and who are now outside and speakers for and on behalf of the project. So really delighted that you're here and thank you all of our ambassadors. Gabor Maté will be joining us momentarily. And so I thought I would just start by letting people know a little bit about what Enneagram Prison Project is and a little bit about the Enneagram. Some of you are quite familiar with addiction and new to the Enneagram and some of you have nothing or know very little about addiction and are steeped in the Enneagram system. So EPP is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and we were founded in 2012. We're on a mission and we're on a mission to help the incarcerated to understand why we do what we do, using the Enneagram to inspire transformation through self-awareness, self-regulation, and self-compassion. We do the work together. Our vision is freeing people all over the world from what we call the prisons of our own making. And we've been creating a paid workforce of Enneagram Prison Project guides, who are the teachers of our curriculum on the inside, our workplace being inside jails and prisons. We teach around 300 to 350 students worldwide on a weekly basis out of California, in Minnesota, at Shakopee Prison in Belgium, and soon to be the UK, Australia, and beyond. We are primarily operating out of Santa Clara, California, San Mateo County and San Francisco County jails, and San Quentin State Prison. I reside in California and so a lot of our initial work has been here and we're now scaling in earnest. We teach to maximum-security people who are incarcerated, minimum-security protective custody gangs. We work with men and with women and we really are willing to work with most any population that had success in all of those different places. And the power of our program really is based on the guides, who are, like I said, the teachers of it, who are helping people to re-acquaint themselves, reconnect with the highest parts of themselves. So I started working with the Enneagram with executives in different Fortune 500 companies. I'm currently at Google, which is a partner of Enneagram Prison Project, and companies like Blue Bottle. And really progressive executives who understand the power of understanding ourselves is what makes us better leaders. I'm also working with high schoolers and different churches and teachers and, like I said, pretty much anyone who's willing to admit to having a personality can work with us. And I have also three boys who are, whether they like it or not, have grown up around the Enneagram. I have a 21-year-old, an 18-year-old, and a 14-year-old. And I would say the Enneagram is bar none, my most successful parenting tool. It's also the tool that probably saved my marriage. And my husband is listening to this call, so love you, Rick. And when I was raising my children, I was using, unbeknownst to me, I was using a style of parenting called attachment parenting and ended up falling into a group that I helped to co-found called Bay Area Attachment Parenting. And I have just always sort of intuitively been drawn to understanding how we heal and how we remain our most present, connected selves and how we nurture one another. I learned the Enneagram and certified to teach it. And my first client was working at a little Texas prison outside of Houston in a place called Cleveland, where I met one of our first ambassadors, and that is Clay Toomey. So Clay, you can unmute because I'm going to introduce you first. Remembering that our ambassadors are the ones that are really the proof that the Enneagram is something that's useful. And I know that all of you are very eager to hear from them, so I'd like for you to get oriented and know who we have here represented. Clay Toomey is a Type V, which is a type that we call the investigator on the Enneagram. And he was, like I said, one of our very first students back in 2010 when we met. He was a very successful bank robber and he turned himself in, which is quite a story. He's also turned himself around using the Enneagram and all kinds of other self-reflection practices. And, excuse me, he's been out for five years. He's written a book called The Blue Chip Store, which I think, Clay, we can get on Amazon.
Yep.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So happy you're here.
Good to be here. Thanks for having me.
Yeah. I'd also like to next introduce Alex Senegal. If you can get unmuted, Alex, we'd love to say hello to you. Alex is a Type IX and that's known as the mediator or the peacemaker. Alex was one of the very first students that I taught here in California in Elmwood Correctional Facility, which is a very progressive facility, and was willing to bring the Enneagram and not even understanding fully what it was. Alex was on the streets before he was seven years old. He's done over 23 years in and out of prisons and jails in California and other places. And he is a shining light. Alex is an ordained minister. He's a chemical and alcohol dependency counselor. He recently went back to San Quentin through the front gate and had us all in tears. You can see a film about that on enneagramprisonproject.org and it's on the Meet the Students page. Good morning, Alex.
How are you doing?
I am so glad you're here. You might need to move closer and just speak up a little bit. I'd like to introduce Renee and we'll wait for Jeff's video to come back on. Renee Lopez is a Type III. We call the Type III the doer or the achiever. Renee took the program seven times while he was incarcerated and was also a very shiny student. He took to the material immediately. And Renee grew up in an alcoholic home, an abusive home. And I met him while he was actually doing time with his brother, was staying in the same pod. And he's been on the steady road to recovery, has been involved with Enneagram Prison Project for the last several years, and he's now working as a safety inspection officer. And welcome, Renee. Good morning.
Good morning.
So happy you're here. I'm going to go on to Sue. Sue Lambert is a Type I, fellow Type I like myself. She's the idealist or the reformer. And Sue was one of the very first students we had in the women's class in San Mateo County, another very progressive facility. Sue was raised in a very abusive home as well and has battled every addiction. She took our class four and a half times on the inside. She's currently EPP's ambassador liaison. She runs the reentry class at the Reentry Center. She has been teaching inside of San Francisco Jail, which is a monumental, very big milestone for Enneagram Prison Project because our whole goal is to have more and more people from the inside come back out and train deeply in the Enneagram so that they can be instructors of our program, guiding other students. So, and Sue is also a grandma and a pioneering influence inside of Enneagram Prison Project. Good morning, Sue.
Good morning, everybody, and good morning, and thank you for having me today.
Thank you for being here. Jeff, nice timing. There's a lot of divine timing going on this morning. Jeff is a Type I also, the idealist reformer like myself and Sue. And Jeff was a crystal meth addict for over 16 years, who reformed the profession of drug dealing, which I hope he will talk about this morning because no one can do that like him, like Clay and the other ambassadors. Jeff has been out and speaking for Enneagram Prison Project in international conferences, at high schools, to spiritual direction communities. He is a manager at an auto parts company and an ambassador for EPP. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning.
So glad you're here. Gabor, welcome.
Hi.
Hi. I'm happy to see you. And I'd like to just read an introduction of our special Advisory Board member because there's just so many things that I don't want to forget. Gabor is a retired physician who, after 20 years of family practice and palliative care experience, worked for over a decade in Vancouver's downtown east side with patients challenged by drug addiction and mental illness. He is the bestselling author of four books published in 25 languages. Gabor is an internationally renowned speaker, highly sought after for his expertise on addiction, trauma, childhood development, and the relationship of stress and illness. His book on addiction received the Hubert Evans Prize for literary nonfiction. And for his groundbreaking medical work and writing, he has been awarded the Order of Canada, his country's highest civilian distinction, and the Civic Merit Award from his hometown, Vancouver. His books include In the Realm of Hungry Ghosts, Close Encounters of Addiction, When the Body Says No, Exploring the Stress Disease Connection, Scattered, How ADD Originates and What You Can Do About It, and with Gordon Neufeld, Hold On to Your Kids: Why Parents Need to Matter More Than Peers. Welcome, Gabor.
Thank you, Susan. It's nice to join you and your ambassadors this morning.
Yeah, so happy that you can. I want to just jump right into it because our time is short and I know we'll be wishing that we had more of it at the end. Just making sure I have my clock there. You know, EPP, Enneagram Prison Project, has been working within the criminal justice system and we have an approach to bringing in the Enneagram, which many people told us, you can't teach that to them in there. But we feel, well, we know, of course, that we can. And part of what we do is we bring in a approach that helps people to see what's right with them. And the Enneagram is a psychological tool that really, it's a system that breaks down the repeating patterns that we have inside of ourselves cognitively, emotionally, and behaviorally, which we all know as personality. And we have inside of ourselves three different centers of intelligence. Everybody has them. We have a center for intelligence that lets us know when we are having our autonomy and our independence. And we have a center of intelligence that lets us know, are we safe? Are we secure? And we also have a center of intelligence that lets us know, are we connected? And all three are necessary, but the last one about our connection is the thing that's fundamental to this term that I mentioned earlier called attachment. And I want to start by asking Gabor if you could just get, help us to define some of our terms, because the basic building blocks of personality are in childhood and our egoic distortion of who we truly are comes out of that childhood as well. So, Gabor, for the rest of us, could you just help us to understand what is attachment and what does that mean?
Sure. Well, first of all, when they say that you can't teach these people, the mistake they're making is that they're confusing people's personalities with who they really are. And the personalities are often daunting because they exhibit all kinds of difficult emotions and behaviors. But what is not realized is that those difficult emotions and behaviors that emanate from the personality actually reflect disturbance of attachment. So attachment is the biological drive of mammals and birds for closeness and proximity with another creature for the purpose of being taken care of or for the purpose of taking care of. So it's a force of gravity. It pulls two bodies together. It's biologically determined for the simple reason that without attachment, the young mammalian infant does not survive, cannot sustain life for any period of time. So there's nothing more important than the attachment relationship for the rearing and survival of the young. That attachment, of course, is required not just for the physical needs of the child or the infant being met for nutrition and shelter and so on, but also for the emotional development of the child. So the human brain actually develops based on our attachment relationships. So, for example, if somebody's a crystal meth addict, they're trying to supplant a chemical in the brain called dopamine. And dopamine is necessary for feeling of being alive and motivation and incentive. Now, the dopamine circuits develop based on our relationships where our attachment figures in our lives. So when there's disturbance of attachment, such as the death of a parent, or even a bad divorce, or childhood abuse, or physical, sexual, emotional abuse, or anything that interferes with the attachment relationship, will do two major things. One is it'll distort brain development to make that person then more prone for mental problems, processing problems, and also for addictions. Number one. And number two, those disturbances of attachment will then create defenses. These defenses are designed to either make up for the pain of having lost the attachments or to try and keep the attachments. So what we call a personality is really a set of defense mechanisms for the most part.
Right.
And the Enneagram is really good at seeing how certain Enneagram types build up certain kinds of defenses.
Right.
And then these defenses, then, for example, aggression is a defense. Aggression is a defense. If somebody grows up believing that they're alone and always under attack, well, one way to defend against that is to be aggressive. That becomes your personality and that lands you in jail. But all it was is a defense. It's not who you are.
Right.
And so basically, what I'm saying is, and I'll finish this right now, is that attachments are, attachment is the essential drive that we have. And whenever the attachment need is not met, or if it's insulted, or if it's distorted, that results in distortions of personality development. And then people think we're those personality distortions, we're not, we're the pure being underneath who put on these defenses because they had no choice in the matter. So, and this is where the Enneagram comes in and it beautifully deconstructs all these defenses and allows people to experience their true personality.
Thank you, Gabor. I think it's so helpful and I'd like to just move right into connecting what you've just described with our ambassadors, because what we noticed when we started to teach on the inside was, first of all, I really like the term that you use, that attachment is a drive that people have. All people have a need to know that they're connected and this distress that we have when we aren't. And you don't have to be, in the Enneagram, 2, 3s and 4s are the types that lead with that center of intelligence that lets us know whether or not we're connected, but truly it's a human one. And so Alex, just if you could unmute and I'd like to start by asking you, as a Type IX, and hearing this description about attachment from Gabor, how is it that this information lands with you, or even if you can think back to when we were first in the class? Because what I know is that you were a little, you know, a baby actually, when you were drinking beer from the baby's bottle. And like that very first connection that you had was not necessarily with human being.
Right. So I was, as I was listening, the first thing that comes to mind was I didn't have the attachment with my mother as an infant, you know, to where, you know, I was given alcohol, beer, you know, which would sedate me, put me to sleep. And then that was a one-parent family, so I didn't have the attachment of a father. And then as I grew older, the defense mechanism to meet that attachment, I took to the streets and go and join gangs. It's, to me, is really clear right now, you know? And then in the process of becoming a gang member at an early age, all these other defense mechanisms, like took on false identities, sorts that influenced a lot of my behavior to just continuously, like you said, attachment, there was a gravity, a force, you know, a force of gravity to connect. So my connection came to gang to satisfy the need that I didn't get in the home from the parents.
Right.
Yes, Susan?
Of course.
So just as Alex was just saying, the brain can't handle the absence of an attachment, especially the child's brain. Just can't handle it. A duckling, if it's born when the mother duck is not there, will attach to a horse or a dog, because the duckling's brain can't handle the absence of an attachment. And the child's brain is the same. So when the parents are not there, when nurturing adults are not there, the child's brain, the child doesn't make a choice in the matter. The child's brain inevitably will connect to whoever's around. And if that's the gang, then the child's brain will naturally be drawn towards the gang. And so, well, a lot of what we call gang behavior and see it as bad behavior is really just an attempt to sustain attachments because they're lacking in the child's life.
Right. And what's interesting to listen to, knowing that you're a Type IX, Alex, is that nines, I think, our personality comes from an inborn temperament, like our animal nature, right? And so you always have had this drive to belong, your word, right, to also connect. And when that's not happening, the defense mechanism, of course, there are many and we use all of them, but there is one defense mechanism that goes along with each type. And for Type IX, it's called narcotization. Call it narking out, right? So numbing things and numbing myself and my environment so that I don't have to be overwhelmed ends up being the imitation of this really beautiful quality that nines come into the world with, which is this, you know, capacity to be. That's what makes you the peacemaker. And so knowing that you had this inescapable drive to bond and to attach, and if those things weren't being perfectly met, it makes sense, actually. It's an intelligent response to start with numbing things out and joining any kind of, anything that would make me feel like I'm belonging, even if it is a gang.
Right. Which comes with the go-along-to-get-along and just to go ahead on and adapt to participate in baby behavior that just was that need, but seeking the attachment, you know, the adaptive behavior became a way of life, to the point that I've done it so long that that's just who I thought I was, but it really wasn't.
Right. So can you speak to the place where you had, sort of, you started to wake up or had this epiphany, or you could call it different things, where you started to recognize who you were and where your habit was?
Well, that would just be in 2014, and when I was introduced to the Enneagram. Never before had I knew language of unconscious behavior. Never before did I know anything about habits, behavioral habits, and things of that nature. And when I was introduced to the Enneagram and this language come to me and begin to learn, and being honest with myself and being willing to see and accept what I was doing that was not the, what I was going along to get along and took on this type of behavior. And then really taking, having the courage to discover who I really am, have, which was, which was a great journey, you know, to be able to know that I was totally opposite of who I was living, who I had been for many years.
Right.
Yeah.
And isn't that the way of it? It usually is the opposite of the thing that we think the worst of ourselves and actually it's entirely different. And thank you for letting yourself be touched. For those of you that are listening but not watching, Alex is really moved. And can you say what is it that touches you right now in this moment, Alex?
Okay. I would just, I just, about 30 minutes before we came on, I was sharing with a young man, 20 years old, just released out of incarceration two hours ago. And he could not believe that I had over 26 years of incarceration, as he said. But I wouldn't have been able to relate to where he is doing today had I not lived that life and the most, or had I not changed. And to be able to make the change and be willing to live from my heart, being willing to be who I really am, my true essence, I would not have been able to help him or to encourage him or to let me help him.
Right.
Yeah, so that...
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, thank you.
And before we move on, I just wanted to ask, when it comes to addictions and cravings and things like that today, you are drug-free, is that correct?
Yeah. I have, what is it, five years now? Yeah, five years of being substance-free.
And I wanted to ask Gabor if you could comment, why is it, what happens to us physiologically that these addictions seem to fall away when we end up healing some of these attachment wounds?
Well, let me ask Alex a question. What did the addiction do for him? Not, you know, what's wrong with it? What did you like about it? What, addiction is anything that'll make you feel temporarily better or you're relieved and so you crave it, but then it has negative consequences and you can't give it up. What is it that it did for you in the short term that you liked about it? There must have been something really powerful about it that it did for you, otherwise you wouldn't have done it.
So, see, that's not fair, because this is the very question I ask my clients, okay? Yeah, but the one thing, a sense of belonging, and it also helped me numb the emotion of the pain that I was...
So you got a sense of connection, which is your very nature, it's even your Enneagram type.
Right.
You got pain relief. So who doesn't want pain relief and connection? And so if you get the addiction, if that's the only way you're going to get it, then that's the way you're going to get it. What happens when you've dealt with the pain? And what happens when you've found other ways of connecting, like for example, through the Enneagram? What happens to you then? You don't need that stuff anymore.
Don't need it, right, right.
Yeah. So emotionally, straightforward. Physiologically, you have actually changes, positive changes in the brain. So you no longer depend on those, I don't want with the details of them, but basically positive receptors develop in the brain, the more positive experiences that you have. Because just as in the beginning, the brain development depended on your relationships, it's also possible for new conditions to promote new brain development even later on in life. So when people say, you know, opiate addiction is a lifelong disease, it's nonsense. Opiate addiction is an attempt to solve a problem and it does affect the brain or crystal meth addiction. But once you've dealt with the underlying problem that made you addicted in the first place, there's no reason for you to go back to the crystal meth or the opiates.
This is really, this is really interesting. I want to go to Jeff next, because you're talking about crystal meth and that's something that I think he knows a thing or two about. And I, so, just starting off with that, Jeff, what's coming up for you as you're listening to what we're talking about?
I'm identifying a lot with the notion of attachment. I grew up in a very stable family, so I had very good attachments. And I think what did it for me is I was attached to this idea of what I was supposed to become professionally. And when I started having troubles in graduate school, and, yes.
Great. This is just the way I work, going through people. Okay? And is it okay if I work with you for a moment on what you just said?
Absolutely.
You know, now you said you were well attached at home. Okay, can I ask you a few questions?
Sure.
We ever bullied in school?
One, briefly, in middle school.
At what age?
About, probably around 12.
Who did you speak to about it?
No one.
Okay. Do you have kids?
I do have two daughters.
Have they ever been bullied?
My older one has.
Who did she talk to about it?
She, at the time, well, I'm divorced and so she, I'm not quite sure, most likely her mother and her aunt.
Let me ask you a question, though. If you had a 12-year-old kid who was being bullied, who would you want her to talk to or him to talk to, if you're the father?
Definitely my parents and administration at school, of course.
Talk to you, right?
Yes.
Okay. If you found out that your child was bullied, but he didn't talk to you, how would you explain that?
I would be flummoxed. I mean, I'd be a little, I'd be very disappointed that they didn't feel comfortable.
Of course you'd be disappointed, but I'm asking, how would you explain it? That they didn't, why does my child not come to me?
They didn't feel comfortable going to me, coming to me for help.
That was your childhood? Okay? So that the attachment wasn't there, Jeff? I'm not saying your parents didn't love you. I'm not saying they didn't do their best. I'm not saying you didn't love them, but I'm saying that connection was somehow disturbed. At some point, you learned very early in life that you're kind of alone and that when you're feeling down and/or scared, you kind of have to suck it up.
You're right.
And that means, and the whole purpose of the attachment relationship is so that doesn't have to happen. So this is the whole point, is that attachments can be disturbed even in homes where there's no overt trauma. Just the parents are too stressed, too depressed, too traumatized themselves, too busy, too economically challenged, to give that child that sense of connection and safety, and that child is traumatized. And I'm suggesting that that's your story. And I'm suggesting that your attachment problem became much earlier than you think it did, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, it makes absolute sense. I mean, perhaps I misspoke. I mean, being provided for does not necessarily equate to get attachment. I agree.
But what's interesting too, Jeff, I think, is that there's an epidemic of this in all kinds of white-collar communities. It's not about not being loved. I really like what, how Gabor put it, that we don't have to throw our parents under the bus, right? It's not for lack of trying or actually trying to love us. But as Type Ones, and you know, you, me, and Sue, we all have this in common, we get the impression very early on that there's not enough... we get the impression very early on that there's not enough protection coming our way, that we are on our own and we we got it. And actually, you don't have to parent a type one child very much, because they operate this way as they're driven to do. And so as you cope with whatever, how whatever gave you the impression that you were on your own, then you can do that pretty well. Personality actually is very, very useful and necessary. But at some point, it gives out, and for you, that was in college. And can you speak to what happened and where did you go?
Well, um, I was a shining star in college in my first year, a couple of years of graduate school, uh, when I sort of started falling behind, a little bit of a perfectionism came into play. Um, I refused to propose to my thesis committee, because I kept working on my proposal and the margin related, the margin fell behind. And uh, one thing that turned out there, I ended up dropping out of school and um, and it fell into the arms of crystal meth. And um, that just flipped all the switches on in my brain that all my previous accolades and accomplishments used to feed for me. And so um, I, that turned into about sixteen, seventeen years of crystal meth addiction, very easily, very fast. And um, I wanna actually, um, I agree hardly with attachment when Dr. Matte had said it can even be um, sort of a field of fire by a divorce. My addiction became way worse when um, my wife and I separated, my ex-wife and I separated. And I just uh, fed it even more. And further speaking, what the addiction did for me is that when I no longer had my family, I created my own little tribe i- in my house and had attachments with a household of addicts, who I tried to teach how to tweak properly or how to use meth the right way, how to conduct yourself as a drug addict. I always used to say, uh, just because you use meth, um, doesn't mean you have to be a tweaker. And so that was my type oneness coming out. So definitely, I could see how um, the lack of attachment definitely fueled my uh, desire to create my own new attachments and further my addiction.
I I love your candor, Jeff, and I I love that you can speak to how your personality continued to come out, that even though you're using crystal meth and feeling like Superman had, and of course, that was going on. But it it, the drug is only a extension of the personality. It doesn't, still doesn't get us uh, over the finish line like we hope that it will. So at some point, things start to fall apart.
Yes, definitely.
And even when I met you, when you were on the inside, I mean, you um, you had a way of keeping things in order. You joined a regimented correctional program. You, again, like we we gravitate towards still trying to make things work and for type one, making reality the way we want to make it. So what is it that happened for you when you, you were already sober when I, when I met you and you started to incorporate the Enneagram and learning your type structure? Can you sort of synopsize what happened for you to make things different?
I never realized just how important it was for me to be good or uh, to embrace that or to do things the right way or do it properly. Um, and I learned that, um, I always thought it was paradoxical that I would break all these laws in my addiction, but um, do it properly, so to speak. I always just, I always say that I broke a ton of laws, but I I followed the rules while doing it. And so I I latched onto that and um, sort of recognized the importance of um, my, how my personality structure does value being good and focused on that. And uh, sort of rediscovered that through the Enneagram.
Yeah, and can you say, how are you working um, with yourself today, knowing this tool? And do you ever have cravings anymore? What's happened for you now and you're healing?
Oh, I've, well, I've been off the meth for over almost five and a half years now, so I'm happy about that. I don't, um, whenever I go create, I would sort of, I'm doing the type one, like self-improvement kick. So I channel it that way. I I do things sort of to better myself and to just to continuously, uh, now that I recognize that that is a part of my personality that I value, I do things to exercise uh, spiritual stuff to continue to better myself. And I I channel my um, sort of desire for that feeling that in that way, more more constructively, I guess you could say.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. You know, for those of you that don't know, we um, we have an Enneagram class that's free to the public, that's ongoing at the Rantry Center in Santa Clara, and Sue Lambert runs that. And so we often have discussions ongoing, just like a support group of saying like, oh, my personality wants to get in out of control. And um, this is really wonderful, happy part of the community. Um, Renee, I'm gonna tap you next and just ask you, what's coming up for you as you're listening to this dialogue and conversation?
Well, uh, so like Jeff, like I, I have, I've been to prison, um, and all my cases, all my, all my drug charges for the past uh, over like about sixteen, seventeen years have been um, possession under the influence and possession of meth for sales. And um, that was, I was thinking about that, about how that looked for me, because I, where it started was when I was young. I uh, I lived on like a compound and um, I was very isolated there. And the only other child on that, in that uh, compound was my brother, and we were enemies. And um, like literally, like I I remember wishing that he would like die or just disappear or something, because he used to like beat me up regularly. And um, my uncle and my grandpa, my father figures were raging alcoholics. And um, my mom was, is handicapped and a single parent. And so she left us with my my uncle and my grandpa to be watched and stuff. So I remember uh, playing with myself, uh, not interacting with any kids, not knowing how. I used to walk to school, uh, really far actually, for uh, for, you know, a third and fourth grader. But uh, it's because I was scared of the kids. I was scared of interacting, because I didn't know how. And so later uh, in life with meth, um, and always, I I've uh, from the time I was eleven until I have this uh, clean time, uh, I have used something, whether it be alcohol, meth, pills, just something to keep myself high uh, my since all those years. And so uh, what meth did was it allowed me to get into a place where I could um, I could connect with people, like I could be their drug dealer. I could, I didn't have to talk a lot, I didn't have to, because I, what I had, they wanted. And they were willing to, you know, cater to me. And so I felt uh, like that was my niche, like I I had a job, but I usually wanted to just run the streets and sell meth and be part of that, because uh, I had friends, you know? And outside of that, I didn't have, I I I, I still feel socially awkward, but I feel like now I have more uh, now that I've been clean a while, I I have more of a, more to talk about. I've done a little bit of living since uh, I've gotten out this last time. Really, uh, I still get really nervous and uh, and uh, anxious when I have to uh, connect with people on a personal level, when I'm like totally clean and sober, which is really, really new for me.
Like today, to five hundred people, for example?
Right, well, just, you know, luckily, I can't see any of them, I can just see you guys, right? So, and even then, I'm still a little bit, and and I've, actually, everybody on these screens I've talked to except for Clay and me.
Right, right.
Oh, you you know, um, I totally get that, that um, connecting with five hundred people is actually easier than connecting with one person. Like for myself, I have no problem connecting with five hundred people or or two thousand people. If I'm on stage, comfortable with what I'm saying. But one to one, it's been a challenge, you know? And so, because it's more intimate, it's more vulnerable. So I totally relate to what was just said. Um, and that's an ongoing process. And and of course, your selling of the drug and 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 being in the gang, it gave you that connection that you lacked all your life. It also gives you a sense of power that you didn't have. It also gave you a sense of purpose and connection, power and purpose are things we all need. So the more you find yourself as you are, uh, through your Enneagram work and other work you're doing, the more um, you realize that you're actually a worthwhile person that people should want to connect with. And 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 if they're in a, if they're in their right minds. And you'll be much better sent above connecting with others.
And I would say that was the pleasure of working with you um, over and over again and all those times you took the program, Renee, is that for type three, threes are um, you know, the type that really can snow the whole world and act like they got everything going on. Um, so I had my wits about you when I was working with you, because I actually have type threes all over my life. Um, and what you were doing was the real thing, that you were actually making contact with um, who you, who you were, not what you were doing and what everybody else was seeing in you. And some of the words that you're using about how, what you were lacking most, felt most um, missing in your life was this sense of connection and types two, three and four are the ones that grapple with that the most. And a long time ago, one of the major developers of the Enneagram, Russ Hudson, who's also sits on our advisory board, said, "We tend to take the drug that makes us more like ourself." And you know, it's interesting, type nines are very uh, very chill, right? But and you you took a depression, you took alcohol, right, to make you more that way. A lot of times, nines will smoke pot, like it, like we need to be more chill, right? But we sort of, that's what we gravitate towards. And I'm a type one and I go for, you know, sugar and caffeine, like, do I need to be any more amped? No, but that's what I do. And so um, just seeing that, what I think is interesting, Gabber, maybe you could just um, touch on it, is you talk about dopamine, and I think certain types have more um, dopamine than others. And type three probably has got quite a bit going on, because you are the do-do-do-doer. And so um, how is it that you're um, I I guess the the regulation of yourself without having to generate that, that um, dopamine that comes from being successful and being seen by other people? How are you working on that inside?
Well, that's interesting. Um, who was talking about, was it Jeff who was saying that he was grade A in college and getting all this success and getting all dopamine through there? And then when he no longer was doing that, then he had to turn to a stimulant, right? To give him his dopamine. And um, which by, which by the way, points to an important fact, that although we think about addictions and we jail people for addictions because of substances, but addictions have nothing to do with substances necessarily. They can be do anything. They can be do anything, they'll regulate our brain chemicals. So as long as Jeff was getting his sense of aliveness, like he wasn't coming from the inside. He didn't feel alive in himself, and that itself is an attachment issue. Because the infant is born totally alive, you know? And then something happens and we close down and we shut down, that's the trauma. So just the fact that he needed a sense of aliveness, that didn't start in college. It's just that he had found ways of finding it, sense of aliveness through external recognition and activity. And all of a sudden, when he loses that, then he's bereft of his dopamine. Have you said that, what was your question again?
Well, you're speaking to it, Renee, what comes up for you as you hear Gabber talking?
Um, yeah, I mean, that's exactly what I was getting from from the process of selling meth, is is that I was getting validation, because you know, every, and I was trying to be cool about it so that people would like me. And then that way, they would um, it would be that, it would be what I needed in that. Even, and and it worked all the way till the end, except for I got arrested and went to prison and was tired of going there, so.
Yeah, thank you. You know, it's it's unfortunate, Clay had to jump off the call, and he is somebody that could speak to um, getting a rush from doing behaviors or processes and his, his, he didn't come from a chemical um, addiction, but he, he was, you know, gambling or robbing banks and things like that. And and he's actually written quite beautifully about it. I want to um, jump over to Sue and just invite you into this conversation. There's so much I know that you resonate with, that you teach, that you deeply steeped in our curriculum. What's touching you right now?
Oh, a lot. When I'm listening to everybody and the doctor talk about um, addictions in childhood and attachment, in my mind, I think as a child, toddler, the first memory is more detachment. And for me, it was like yearning to to get some kind of attachment with my parent, but, parents. But early on, it was more like survival. So it was, it was really a lonely um, existence. And you know, knowing what I know now about what I've learned about addiction and the addictions I I used to practice regularly were uh, food, alcohol, prescription pills, gambling. And reading some of Dr. Matei's work, it's like, my life was pretty much twenty-four hours, seven days a week, operating through addiction and my personality defenses. Uh, you know, bringing that all together, it's clear to me now that when I was operating for so long from that perspective, uh, those different addictions were bringing me joy or fun or um, solitude or uh, whatever the need was, I would go from one to the other, one to the other, but never really being in touch with myself at all, since you, you know, ever. I just can't remember ever a time um, that I was ever really knowing myself or in touch with who I am. Pretty much thinking that I was just a defective person most of my life. Now I'm like, what, sixty-eight? And um, but I really feel like I'm like five years old, because um, that's when I learned the Enneagram, when I was incarcerated. And it was where I could learn that.
Doing great, Sue. Just take a breath for a second. And for those that are listening, everybody else can take a breath too, because that's how energy works. I know you're holding a lot, and thanks for sharing what you're sharing. I know, I know.
Well, it was where I I learned that there was a way for me to live and be myself without addiction and hold on to my own pain and heal myself and parent myself. And that's why I try and help with other people doing the same thing now, um, because I work with people that are released from incarceration in my other job during the day. And um, there's just so many people that carry so much trauma. And um, they don't know that there was a way out for them. And I'm so grateful to have learned the Enneagram and learned about my addictions and been able to do some healing and still know that every day um, I can do this work with the tools that I've learned. And I'm just a more peaceful and blessed person to be here right now and be able to share that.
So can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Just one thing that you said, okay? You said you don't remember ever having been yourself, right?
Yeah.
I should not challenge that a little bit.
Okay.
When you talked about um, being five years old again, uh, with the Enneagram, did that seem strange to you or did it seem familiar?
It seems uh, new.
Did it seem at all familiar, like you actually found yourself now, did it? There's no sense of, yeah, this is really it?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. It's like, I felt like um, I've always felt like this goodness and uh,
Yeah, so what I'm saying is that the memory was there all along.
Yes.
We just covered up all this crap, you know, that was imposed on you by your childhood trauma. But the memory never goes away. And that's why it feels so good when we get back to it.
And I think what the Enneagram does is it gives us language for what you're, you're just inviting Sue to recall, Gabber. And for type one, type ones are the type that come to teach the rest of us about goodness. I mean, Gandhi was a one for for Pete's sake, right? Ones see how the world could be and they have this impulse to bring that. And that's exactly who you are. Sue was writing up the the correctional staff when she was incarcerated, helping them make their rules better. Like, she's always been about improvement. And so there's a deep, deep recognition when we find ourselves on the Enneagram. It's a map back to this essential quality. And that that's the tragic part is that we forgot. And the way that we come out of our childhood is directly related to how easy it is to recall that, how present we can be with our own goodness. And um, I just think that's such an important point of what we're doing. Really, really appreciating our ambassadors for um, keeping it so real and being so transparent, because this is, this is truly um, quite inspiring. And even though I have worked with you all for a number of years and And even though I have worked with you all for a number of years and really moved by watching you. Gabor, I wanted to ask you a question. Um, I know that you've worked with uh, the men inside of our program in San Quentin and they are very excited about your work and um, and excited to see you again. And uh, they've been reading uh, Gabor's book. If you haven't read it, I'm gonna put a plug in it shamelessly for In the Realm of Hungry Ghosts. Definitely recommend it. One of our um, men in blue, wearing blue inside asked a question. And so I wanted to pose it to you. He's a type four. And he said, "How do I, an addict, get over the shame of being too weak to, to overcome my addiction?"
What is a type four?
Um, type four is actually the type that you have told us that you resonate with periodically, which is the type that sees sort of the importance of authenticity and comes to teach the rest of us about how to keep it real and stay connected. Type fours teaches us about beauty and depth and have a sense that there's something about me that's flawed. And there's um, something about me that's, that other people have that I don't have. And they, they tend to carry a deep sense of abandonment. Is that sounding familiar?
My problem is I recognize myself in all the facts.
Yeah, well, you're a pretty healthy guy and that's true. But that's a type four.
Okay, fair enough. Um, so the question is, how to deal with the shame of having been too weak?
Right, which is interesting, just to say one more thing before you answer, is that types two, three and four tend to be the types that are really grappling with shame. Like there's a, they grapple with identity in general and feeling that there's something about me that's not enough, which of course is the human condition. And types two, three and four tend to put out an image, concoct an image that um, they hope other people will regard, regard better. And then underneath is a shame that they feel like that, you know, the people bought it and that's not really who I was in the first place.
Yeah. So the answer is, how do I deal with the shame of having been too weak to give up my addiction? Is that the question is? Is that there's no answer to that question because it's a wrong question. It, it's formulated in a certain way. The, the word weak itself is an accusation. And so basically what you've got is an inner prosecutor that's putting you on trial here. And as we've seen from everybody who's spoken here today, all your ambassadors, the addiction always served a really damn good purpose in a person's life. We all need to feel connected. We all need to have pain relief. We all need to have a sense of importance. We all need to have a sense of purpose. We all need to have a sense of belonging. So when those qualities are deprived, when we're deprived of those qualities because of what happens to us early in childhood, then we turn into the addiction. That's not a weakness. It's an almost automatic response. It's simply what we do to, to feel like a human being. There's no, weakness has got nothing to do with it. And I, I myself, who've had my own addictive behaviors and still continued in them long after I knew that they were bad for me. It's not a question of weakness. I'm not making excuses because we have to take responsibility. But how do we take responsibility is by getting to know ourselves.
Right.
Then you could, there's no point telling, telling somebody who doesn't know themselves to take responsibility.
Right.
Nobody in there to take responsibility. And so the, the answer to the question is, is that because that wasn't enough you present yet and you still needed those things that the addiction was giving you. It's no matter, it's not a matter of weakness. It's a question of being deprived. And as you do the work to become more yourself or to become yourself, period, as people here have articulated so beautifully, uh, the need then naturally diminishes. So forget the idea of weakness. Just get curious about yourself. And instead of saying, why was I so weak? Ask yourself, why was I still lacking? What was still missing for me? That made me still dependent on those behaviors or on those substances?
Thank you, Gabor. Just in the last minute that we have before we need to close, you, you did spend some time in, in San Quentin with our students. And can you just say a few things about how that struck you and the impressions that were left on you?
Well, first of all, it was a very authentic experience. I mean, I was in that room with your Enneagram students and, and it's hard to convey this, but it was a more real interaction than one expects in almost anywhere one goes in one's life. So there's a deep sense of authenticity there. People were just totally committed to being themselves. And a lot of love in that room. So you wouldn't expect to find authenticity and love in this prison. That's not anybody's idea with prisoners. And of course, it's not because they're in prison. It's because the work that we're doing in the prison.
Right.
The, what I came away with is that even under very difficult circumstances and after very challenging lives, people given the right guidance can actually come back to themselves. So it was a tremendously optimistic experience. As much as I don't like prisoners and when you talk about the criminal justice system, it is a criminal system. It's, it's, it's a good name. It's a criminal justice. The way it usually treats people and how it doesn't give enough opportunities for people to find themselves. It just punishes them. It, the prison system basically punishes people for having been traumatized. But, but San Quentin, God bless, offers a lot of programs, including the Enneagram. And it's an opportunity to see what's on the other side of all that.
Yeah, thank you.
What's on the other side is love and authenticity.
Right. Thank you for sharing that. And I, I really thank you for bringing that approach, your compassionate approach. And um, and also really thank our ambassadors for being here to, to let us see into your hearts and to be exemplars of what's happening in this project. Just in closing here, um, if the work of Enneagram Prison Project touches you, we really hope that you'll reach out to us. We are really growing our volunteer base uh, in every, in every way. And um, we're, we're really looking for many things. And especially um, one thing I want to highlight is that we're looking for Enneagram teachers who are deeply committed to being in support of other people who want to get to know the best parts of themselves. So we have a recruiting page on our website. Please check it out. And um, if you'd like to know more, you can send an email to info@ennegramprisonproject.org. And also um, to let you know that Enneagram Prison Project will be speaking in the International Enneagram Association's conference in Portugal this May, will be in the UK this June, and will be in Oakland, California this July. Thank you, everybody, for being here and look forward to seeing you on our next uh, our next town hall. Watch this space. And for those of you that did register, we will be sending out a recording. So, thank you. Thank you, Gabor.